If you are able, please join me in standing as Pike Major John Ray, Chief Mediside, meet in council to let. Please continue to stand as Suwaki Marule performs on Canada.
Oh, Canada, terre de nos ailleurs. Ton front est ce de fleur glorieux. With glowing hearts we see thee bright, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. East to be the sea, east to sea. Oh, Canada, thou what's it been? Oh, Canada, thou what's it been?
Thank you, Suwaki. You may be seated. As City Clerk for the City of Lethbridge, I hereby call this inaugural organizational meeting of council to order. I'm excited to now invite you to look to the screen as we play our new land acknowledgement video.
Oki.
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 Oki and welcome.
We acknowledge that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian plains.
We pay respect to the Blackfoot people's past, present, and future.
We recognize the thousands of indigenous peoples.
From many diverse nations.
Called Lethbridge home.
Including members of the Blackfoot Confederacy.
The Sixikates of the.
Akana.
Bi'kani.
Sixika.
Um'skapi people.
As well as other First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples.
We respect indigenous people's cultural heritage.
Beliefs.
Truth.
And relationship to the land.
That stretches back in time.
We will not blink at history.
We will not blink at history.
And we will learn from it.
Oki is an invitation.
A step forward.
In Blackfoot, oki means hello.
Oki means hello.
Hello.
Oki.
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 And welcome to the lands of the Blackfoot people.
Fantastic video. Oki, good afternoon. I'm Bonnie Milker, the City Clerk and the Election任事員Officer for the City of Lethbridge, and I welcome you all, administration, family, friends, honored guests, and elders, to this inaugural organizational meeting to celebrate the swearing-in of the Members-Elect of the 2021-2025 City of Lethbridge Council. It is my great privilege and honor to introduce the Members-Elect of Lethbridge's newest elective council. I would ask that you please stand when I call your name and remain standing. Mayor-elect Blaine Higgin. Councillor-elect Mark Campbell. Councillor-elect Jeff Carlson. Councillor-elect Belinda Croson. Councillor-elect Rayco Dotick. Councillor-elect John Middleton Hope. Councillor-elect Nick Palladino. Councillor-elect Ryan Parker. Councillor-elect Jen Schmidt Remple. Ladies and gentlemen, our new council-elect for 21 to 2025. They can be seated. Let's elect. Today is a wonderful occasion, an auspicious commencement, and a promising day for the City of Lethbridge. It's a new beginning filled with hope, optimism, and great possibilities. For the next four years, this mayor-elect and eight councillors-elect you see before you will take the responsibility of creating policy and making decisions that allow this tremendous city to grow and to continue to thrive. They will play an integral role in how we navigate current challenging situations as well as build upon Lethbridge's many strengths. I now welcome Kynai Elder Mike Bruzhead to the stage to offer a neighbor's nation greeting.
Oki. Good morning. I'm so happy to be here. 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 Good day. This is a good day for your chief, the mayor, for your mokutuksiks, the council, for the staff that are here, and relatives. You just saw a very touching engagement of our acknowledgement of Sixikates of the Blackfoot Territory. I'm a direct descendant of Red Crow, who was one of the people present to negotiate Treaty VII. I'm a direct descendant. And today, I've been in Lethbridge for quite some time. Today embarks a journey for all the leadership to really come together for the sake and prosperity of our people, of all nationalities, of the Blackfoot people, because many of the Blackfoot people are not going to go home. They have settled here in Sikohkutoki, in Lethbridge. And children and grandchildren are going to be growing and going to school and working side by side with the citizens of Lethbridge. So with the mayor and the new elected council and the incumbents, I too, at one time, was an elected official. I know the jitters. I know the beginning. Hopefully, this journey is a good journey for your chairs, for your seats, for your meetings, to put Lethbridge on the map for good reasons. We always hear about two big cities, Mochinstis, Calgary, Ummukoyis, Edmonton. Let's put Lethbridge, Sikohkutoki, on the map globally. Let us entice commerce, business. That way, all of our people will be able to be employed and work. I sincerely, with my prayers today, give you that good leading spirit to lead this city in a good direction, that I and my grandkids, who live here in the city, will prosper, will reap the benefits of the accommodations of Lethbridge. So once again, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am proud of you guys. It's hard work, and I said it earlier, agree to disagree, but when the sun goes down, shake hands, pull together as one team, because Lethbridge is looking at you. Lethbridge is counting on you. Lethbridge wants you to be good leaders, not impartial, but look at the community of Sikohkutoki as complete. So from the Blood Tribe, as a former Blood Tribe councilman, as an elder for the Akana Skakui, I welcome you. I welcome you to Blackfoot Territory and may the two groups of people, Akana and Bi'kani and Sixikates of the Blackfoot people, work together and share and do not hesitate to reach out for guidance, not only reaching out to me, but the citizens of Lethbridge, especially the seniors. They've been here for a long time. They know what's going on. So good morning. I'm so happy to see all of you, to send greetings from my tribe, Akana. And like I say, I've been in Lethbridge, and I hope, and I really believe, this is going to be the best council ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elder Bruzhead. It's certainly an honor to have you here today. Recently, we put out a call to the local schools and invited the youth of this city, our future leaders, to write about Lethbridge. One submission won our hearts. Please join me in welcoming to the stage a burgeoning poet laureate and winner of the writing contest, grade seven student from Senator Joyce Fairburn School, Alanna Yance van Rensburg, to read her poem entitled "Why I Love Lethbridge."
I moved to Canada when I was four. Lethbridge was the first place I moved to, and it's always felt like home. I love all the wonderful schools. I love that everyone here is so kind and respectful. I love all the views. I love the Cooley's. I love the trees. I love the roads on the south side with the trees leaping over top of it, making you feel like you're in a fairy tale. I love that we have a university that has almost all the sports you can think of. I love all the lakes. I love the winding rivers. I love all the open fields where the deer prance. I love all the different variety in houses. I love the tall green trees that stretch to the sky. I love all the water parks and climbing walls. I love all the ice cream shops, because who doesn't like ice cream? I love all the different shops here. I love that every Halloween, we have specific shops just for it. I love all the rolling hills and all the parks. I love the birds that sing. I love the geese on the lake that I count every year. I love that you can see the mountains. I love the wildlife. I know that I've already said this, but I love all the people, but most of all, I love everything here. I am proud to call Lethbridge my home.
Thank you so much, Alanna. What a magnificent poem and a good reminder of what a great city we have, and it has so much to offer for everybody. Alanna will also receive a tour of City Hall and will meet with the new city council. Congratulations, Alanna. So ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, we have now reached a part in our program that truly marks the beginning of our new council term. It is time to start the official swearing-in of our council members-elect. We will bring out the oaths, and I will also ask Deputy City Clerk David Sarsfield to help administer the oath. Thank you. Mayor-elect Blaine Higgin, can you please come to the podium to take the oath of office?
I, Blaine Higgin, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to the law the office of mayor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Please come to the table to sign the oath of office. Congratulations, Mayor Higgin. Councillor-elect Mark Campbell, please come to the podium to take the oath of office.
I, Mark Campbell, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Mark Campbell. Councillor-elect Jeff Carlson, please come to the podium to take the oath of office.
I, Jeff Carlson, affirm that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge.
Congratulations, Councillor Carlson. Councillor-elect Belinda Croson, please come to the podium to take the oath of office.
I'm still short. I, Belinda Croson, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Croson. Councillor-elect Rayco Dotick.
I, Rayco Dotick, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Dotick. Councillor-elect John Middleton Hope.
I, John Middleton Hope, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Middleton Hope. Councillor-elect Nick Palladino.
I, Nick Palladino, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Palladino. Councillor-elect Ryan Parker.
Do you think on my eighth time, I wouldn't be nervous? But I still am nervous.
I, Ryan Parker, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Parker. Councillor-elect Jen Schmidt Remple.
I, Jen Schmidt Remple, swear that I will diligently, faithfully, and to the best of my ability, execute according to law the office of councillor of the City of Lethbridge. So help me God.
Congratulations, Councillor Schmidt Remple. In accordance with the laws in the province of Alberta, I hereby declare this mayor and these councillors duly sworn in. Ladies and gentlemen, your new city council. Well, now I think it's time to celebrate. So you're in for a real treat of local culture, the Nikkei Cultural Society of Lethbridgean area Minyo dancers. This talented group will perform two dances this afternoon. The opening number, Wonderful Canada, has dance movements depicting. has dance movements depicting two cultures portraying the Maple Leaf and the wide expanse of Canada, as well as the cherry blossoms blooming in Japan. The closing dance, Omatsuri Ondo, is a dance of celebration for all occasions, such as today. Please join me in welcoming the Nikkei Cultural Society of Lethbridgean-area Minyo dancers to the stage. Thank you, Minyo dancers, for that graceful and beautiful performance. I'd now like to welcome city manager Craig Dalton to give his address to the new council.
Far less graceful, I can assure you. I might need some technical assistance here. Mayor and council, friends and family of mayor and council, ladies and gentlemen, staff from the city, what a pleasure to be able to participate and observe this swearing-in ceremony this afternoon. There's a saying that goes, "If you want it to be an event, make it an event." And the first thing I'd like to do is just tip my hat to the city clerk Bonnie Hilford and her extended team, not only for some phenomenal work through the recent election, but in setting up an appropriate and fitting ceremony today to mark what really is an important event, a transition from one council to another, and to acknowledge this group of community leaders who have stood forward and will be leading us through the next four years of whatever may come. The first thing I'd like to do, I'd like to do three things relatively quickly. The first is congratulate mayor and council on your election, on gaining the support and trust of citizens from across our community. The second thing I'd like to do is commend you and thank you for putting your hat into the ring. In the short time I've been city manager, I've certainly seen a number of you on this stage and your former colleagues work incredibly hard on behalf of your fellow citizens in your community. And I know the dedication and hard work that is required. And so again, I salute you and commend you for throwing your hat in the ring and providing us with that leadership. The last thing I'd like to do is just assure you that you have a strong team of very capable and dedicated public servants behind you, a strong team of dedicated and capable public servants who are looking to your leadership and who very much look forward to seeing the priorities, goals, and objectives you set for us as a community. And lastly, a strong and dedicated team of public servants that are ready to go. And so we look forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. I'll now invite everyone to look to the screen again as we have some messages to share from other government leaders who wanted to wish city council well as they embark on a new term in office.
Hello, everyone, and a special welcome to those being sworn in to serve on Lethbridge City Council. What an incredible honour. Congratulations on earning the trust and the votes of your fellow citizens. This is truly an accomplishment worth celebrating, and you should be very proud. As a fellow representative of the people of Lethbridge, I hope that we can work together, regardless of partisan stripe, in order to make this city the very best it can be. I'm talking about the best it can be to live, work, play, and invest in. Now, if I could offer one small reflection on my time as a member of the province, it would be this: Listening matters more than anything. It's the stories of those we represent that empower us to create good policy and implement positive change. I wish you all the best as you go forward, and every success.
Well, congratulations, you won an election. Now you're on Lethbridge City Council. You know, I know that it was probably a tough campaign, but here's the thing, folks, what if I told you that that was the fun part? Now the real work begins. You know, campaigns are a lot of work, but they're nothing like governing. Here's what I've learned from watching municipal councils of all sizes and people of all backgrounds governing in the province of Alberta. The hard work will win the day. So show up to your meetings having read your materials. Ask the right questions of the civil service professionals that support you. Make sure that you have full knowledge of all of your options and every possible way that you can solve a particular problem that you feel that the voters sent you to solve. And make sure always to keep your feet on the ground, by which I mean, go out and knock on the same doors that you just knocked on to win that election. Make sure that you are listening to people, and you're doing so in a way that gets out from all of the social media and all of the clouds of, you know, all kinds of ways that things get put to you, and just go talk to ordinary people. I'm looking out over here over the north side where I can see some really important reasons to invest in infrastructure and redevelop these communities. Think about those folks in every decision that you make. And you won't go wrong, especially if you've read the documents first, you're asking the right questions, and you know, you're doing the work that people sent you to do, whether it's in the headlines or not. Best of luck and enjoy the ride.
Hi there, it's Nathan Udder family for Lethbridge East. First of all, let me congratulate each and every one of you for becoming Lethbridge's new city council and mayor. Your genuine interest, concern, and care for our community is incredibly valuable and well-needed to help shape Lethbridge's future to the best it can be. I'd like to congratulate the councillors, Belinda Croson, Jeff Carlson, Jen Schmidt-Rempel, John Middleton-Hope, Mark Campbell, Nick Palladino, Ray Kodek, and Ryan Parker. And a very big congratulations to our new mayor, Blaine Higgin. You have a lot of work ahead of you, but I look forward to working with you to make Lethbridge the best city in Alberta. Congratulations and good luck.
Hi, my name is Rick McIver. As the Minister of Municipal Affairs, it is my pleasure to offer sincere congratulations to the newly-elected mayor of Lethbridge and eight city councillors who are being sworn in today. The job you have agreed to take on is extremely important, and I thank you for stepping forward. Elected office is one of the highest orders of public service. The voters of your community have put their trust in you to make decisions that are in the best interests of them as individuals and of the community overall. As an elected official, you play an essential role in building a vibrant and sustainable Lethbridge. Over the course of your term, you will be called upon to make some difficult decisions. Those decisions impact your city, its residents, and local businesses. But I have no doubt you are up to the job because the voters have said so. As we continue to move forward as a province, municipalities play a key role in helping rebuild our local economies and prepare for the post-pandemic world. By working together, I truly believe there is nothing we cannot accomplish. As you settle into your new roles, please do not hesitate to contact me or my ministry with any questions. Municipal Affairs has a variety of resources available to help you better understand the roles of being a municipal councillor. Personally, after being elected for nearly 20 years, including nine years on a municipal council, the best advice I could give you is this: The best way to know that we elected people are doing the jobs that we were sent here to do is when we remind ourselves every day that we work for the citizens. I look forward to working with each of you, and I thank you for your hard work and leadership in providing essential municipal services and planning for the future. Once again, congratulations. I'm sure you have earned it. Thank you.
Congratulations to all members of the Lethbridge City Council who were recently elected and re-elected. Your worship the mayor and to all of the councillors and to others who didn't get elected, I just want to say thank you for your devotion to public service and your community by putting your name on the ballot, by making our democracy work. The government of Alberta looks forward to working with this new council to strengthen Lethbridge and Alberta as we get through this fourth wave of COVID and move forward to a brighter and more prosperous future as a real land of opportunity. So good luck in the work ahead of you in this new mandate as Lethbridge City Council.
Oki, and good afternoon. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we're gathered on the land of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian plains. I extend my respect and desire to build stronger relationships in the spirit and intent of truth and reconciliation with all Indigenous peoples who call the city home. Before I start the formal part of my address today, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a few folks. I'd like to thank and acknowledge mayor, former mayor Chris Spearman for his eight years of dedication and public service. I have great respect and admiration for the passion and commitment he has for this community. To my former council colleagues, Jeff Kaufman, Joe Morrow, and Rob Marashiro, thank you for your years, actually decades, of combined public service. Your voices will be missed. To the election staff who helped make this process run so smoothly, thank you. I'd also like to thank the individuals who ran but were unsuccessful. You truly stood up for what you believed in, and I thank you, and Lethbridge thanks you. To my colleagues, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and commitment it takes to earn a spot on city council's table and congratulate all of you on securing a seat. Together, let's represent citizens' voices, their hopes and dreams, and work with their best interests at heart. Together, let's see diversity of experiences, knowledge, and perspectives as strengths. Together, let's work to ensure Lethbridge is an even better place in four years than it is today. A little more than a week ago, the residents of our beloved city voted to put their trust in this group of nine people, not as individuals, but as a team, to lead them into a brighter future. I look forward to establishing and growing strong bonds with our regional partners, provincial and federal governments, in order to advocate for the resources and funding our city needs to address key issues. Let's take steps to further secure and advance our business sector's needs so we can be the first-place investors the first-place investors and businesses come to when they want to open new doors or new ventures. Our ability to produce world-class research and innovation between our two outstanding post-secondary institutions is phenomenal. Let's continue to work together with the University of Lethbridge and Lethbridge College to leverage the work they do to bring focus to how they're changing the game of technology and innovation on a to bring focus to how they're changing the game of technology and innovation on a world stage. Indigenous relationships will continue to be a key focus as we move into a new term as City Council. I look forward to continuing the good work and relationships between the neighbouring First Nations and our city. As a council, we will set in motion a plan that will make Lethbridge a better community for everyone. Together, your City Council will treat each issue pragmatically and with you in mind. To my colleagues, we may not always agree with each other, but let's act with respect for one another's opinions. We each bring a set of unique experiences, opinions, and perspectives to the table. It is why we were elected. Together, we can use those strengths to build a better future for our community. One thing that stood out to me during all of the campaign was our city's eternal optimism. I want our council to be a source of that continued optimism. I want to give residents something to be hopeful for, and in order to do that, we have to show them that we're working for them. So how do we do that? Let's be open, accountable, and a transparent group of community leaders. Let's address the concerns of our residents, whether they voted for us or not. Let's be leaders for everyone and good financial and environmental stewards for future generations. It is no secret that I believe one of our first areas we need to look at as City Council is community safety. I look forward to hearing the ideas and perspectives of my fellow councillors on this key issue as we work toward a solution for our city. There are many people I'd like to thank for helping me get to this point in my public service career here today. To my loving and ever-patient wife Jen and our two incredible daughters, Jaden and Juliana, thank you. Thank you for being so generous with your time while I was campaigning and sharing what little downtime we did get together with the rest of the community. There are countless people who volunteered on all of our campaigns, who worked late nights and hundreds of hours. You know who you are, and on behalf of all of us, thank you. But mostly, thank you to the residents of Lethbridge for giving us this opportunity to serve you. Lethbridge, I look forward to working with you, and I'm humbled to be your mayor. It's now my great pleasure to introduce my friend, an award-winning country music artist, Trevor Panzak. Thank you, and God bless our city.
Hello, everybody. So good to be here. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the introduction, and congratulations to all the council people. This stage is full of talent, and I'm looking forward to... I just wanted to thank you for including me today because it's a very special day. And this is a special room for me because this is one of the rooms where I first got started, whether it was at the Care From the Heart Telethon or a concert fundraiser that my dad was organising. I wanted to start by singing a song for all the hard-working people on this stage and everybody within our city limits. This song's for you. It's called "Another Day, Another Dollar." Is this guitar coming through? It is kicking. A farmer saves a family from a building burning down. A teacher keeps a kid from quitting school. And a trucker bikes a load in, and the world keeps spinning round. A doctor brings a baby in brand-new. Another day, another dollar to pay them bills. Step by step, everything's uphill. Can't slow down, you can't sit still. If you don't do it, nobody else will. Build a dream, change a life. It's ordinary nine-to-five. Another day, another dollar. Up the creek and down the hauler. A sheriff stops a load of dope from poisoning the streets. A welder builds a building to the sky. And a rider makes an idea come to life and spread its wings. A pilot gives us all a chance to fly. Another day, another dollar to pay them bills. Step by step, everything's uphill. Can't slow down, you can't sit still. If you don't do it, nobody else will. Build a dream, change a life. It's ordinary nine-to-five. Another day, another dollar. Up the creek and down the hauler. Whoa, then we'll have a little fun. Whoa, when tomorrow comes. A preacher reads the Bible and spreads the word that saves our souls. A farmer plants his field and then he prays. A mama picks her kid up and wipes his little nose. A soldier calls back home from far away. And a businessman makes money and he spreads it all around. A beggar on the corner gets a five. A musician plays his heart out just to hear the sound. Conductor keeps the train running on time. Another day, another dollar to pay them bills. Step by step, everything's uphill. Can't slow down, you can't sit still. If you don't do it, nobody else will. Build a dream, change a life. It's ordinary nine-to-five. Another day, another dollar. Up the creek and down the hauler. Another day, another dollar. Whoa. Another day, another dollar. For all you hard-working people, thank you. Just yesterday morning, they let me know you were gone. Suzanne, the plans they made, put an end to you. I walked out this morning and I wrote down this song. I just can't remember who to sing it to. I've seen fire and I've seen rain. I've seen sunny days that I thought would never end. I've seen lonely times when I could not find a friend. But I always thought I'd see you again. Won't you look down upon me, Jesus? You gotta help me make it stand. You just got to see me through another day. Cause my body's aching, my time is at hand. I won't make it any other way. Whoa, I've seen fire and I've seen rain. I've seen sunny days that I thought would never end. I've seen lonely times when I could not find a friend. But I always thought I'd see you again. I've been walking my mind to an easy time, my back turned towards the sun. And Lord knows when the cold winds blow, it'll turn your head around. But now it's hours and hours on the telephone line to talk about things to come. Sweet dreams and flying machines and pieces on the ground. Whoa, I've seen fire and I've seen rain. I've seen sunny days that I thought would never end. I've seen lonely times when I could not find a friend. But I always thought I'd see you, baby. Thought I'd see you one more time, my friend. Thought I'd see you. Suzanne, the plans they made, put an end to you. There you go. Thank you very much. I recorded that song for my 2010 album, and I thought I had to just record one James Taylor song in my life. That was my favourite one, still is to this day. And this last song I'll sing for you before I go is a title track to my last record, it's called "Where I Go to Come Back." And this song went top forty for us right across the whole country. And I dedicate it to our mayor and the councils today. Thanks again for having me. A little path through the trees, a little shade down by the river. A little cane pull no bites, take a nap. That's where I go to come back. A little Friday night lights and an ice cold Coca-Cola. A little good old boy slap on the back. That's where I go to come. Back from the world that's turning crazy. Back from the roar of the radio news. Back down to earth, the roots that raised me right to the things worth holding on to. Back to the air, it's worth me breathing. Back to the place where I can see reality. Back to being me. A little concrete block church, a lot of out-of-tune singing, and a few good words from a man in black. They got a little garden of stone, full of weeds and wildflowers, and some people I've loved from my past. Well, that's where I go to come. Back from the world that's turning crazy. Back from the roar of the radio news. Back down to earth, the roots that raised me right to the things worth holding on to. Back to the air, it's worth me breathing. Back to the place where I can see reality. Back to being me. A little red brick house, breeze blowing through the curtains. A little county road dart on the map. That's where I go. That's where I go to come back. That's where I go. Lethbridge, Alberta, Canada. Thank you very much, everybody. Hi, Nash. Hi, Coulter.
Ladies and gentlemen, Trevor Panzak. Let's have another hand. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you, Trevor. That was a fitting celebratory ending to the program. We really appreciate that. So to conclude the ceremony, I would like to once again congratulate the 2021 to 2025 Lethbridge City Council and thank these nine people elected for choosing public office. It is indeed a noble act. We thank them for declaring their commitment in front of all of us and wish them luck in their journey to continue to build on the great foundation of the city and to serve the many citizens. And finally, council, I would like to end and leave you with this quote: "I guarantee you will discover that while public service improves the lives and the world around you, its greatest reward is the enrichment and new meaning it will bring to your own life." It's been my pleasure and honour to serve you as emcee today, and thank you for joining and celebrating with us. I would just like to take a minute to thank the City Clerk's team, the Communications Team, the Yates crew, Michael, for making this ceremony happen and this special day happen. I really appreciate it. So I hereby recess this inaugural organisational meeting of council to November 1st at 1:30. Please rise as Pipe Major John Gray and Chief Medizadeh lead out our new council.